Twenty-two at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Tara King, and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan?
I am here attending on Zoom as I've been traveling for business, and there is no one in the room with me.
Alderman Cleese?
Present.
Alderman Moran?
Present.
Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Como?
Present.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Goveya?
Here.
Alderman Tebow?
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Here.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
I'm here.
Thirteen physically in attendance and one participating via Zoom. Thank you. Just also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Just want to make one announcement regarding the vacant seat in Ward Seven. The process that I've come up with, and I think is sort of fair, is that I will take letters of interest from qualified individuals in Ward Seven, and we will schedule a meeting on a letter that should be in our possession by 7:22. And we will have a special Board of Aldermen meeting on 7:25 to interview and nominate and hopefully elect someone to fill that seat. Sound fair? Thank you. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I wanted to address a couple of the items that are on the agenda tonight. First is R. 22044, having to do with the abatements overlay issue. We started the year, and you've received an accounting from John Griffin, CFO. We started the year with over $6 million in the account, but we knew, and a $1.5 million reserve against the possibility of an overlay or an abatement number that would go over the budgeted or allocated amount. Now, overlay means, what that is, it's an account from which we settle abatement cases, principally commercial properties on which abatement cases, meaning a reduction in taxes, is being sought, first through simply negotiation, but then through litigation, either at the Board of Land and Tax Appeals or at the Superior Court. We knew it was going to be a year in which quite a few abatements needed to be granted. Of course, we always try to maximize recovery, but there usually is, in the commercial cases, experts on both sides, and there's always room to argue. So, we saw the overlay account used up, and part of the overlay is necessary, hence the transfer, for basically three reasons. Two of them are COVID-related. First of all, the COVID pandemic, since it began in early 2020, so for the last couple of years, has affected, reduced, at least that's the argument of the commercial property owners, reduced the value of commercial properties, malls, office buildings, et cetera, because they are receiving less use than they did pre-COVID. Number two, the COVID pandemic resulted in the delay of the negotiation and resolution of many abatement cases because courts were barely hearing anything. The Board of Land and Tax Appeals, same thing. And usually cases settle around the time or as a hearing is approaching. And when the hearings are postponed for two years, the leverage, the principal motivator for the parties to settle and for, in our case, the commercial property owners to get more reasonable and compromise, the motivation is not there until the hearing is upon us. So, the delay of hearings caused many abatement requests from the past to be pushed forward into the present. Third, there were two pilot agreements negotiated. Now, those are payment in lieu of taxes. They've been approved by you here on the Board of Aldermen with Dartmouth and with Southern Hampshire Medical Center. They claim that, and this is always the claim, that because they're nonprofits, they are not subject to taxes at all, and that they shouldn't have to pay anything. The city claims that because there are many profit-making components of each institution, doctors, practices, things like that, that they are taxable. The law is ambiguous. So, we negotiate pilot agreements, payment in lieu of taxes. Now, there had been pilot agreements with each organization that terminated in 2018 and '19, I think. The objective of the city, our objective, was to increase the amounts paid by the institutions over what they had been under the previous pilot agreements. And that was accomplished. And Attorney Bolton can give you the numbers exactly, but the pilot payments were increased significantly in each case. But since those properties were being carried at fair market value, as though they were totally taxable, when a compromise is reached and a pilot agreement is negotiated, which is more than it was before, but less than it would be if they were paying full taxes, a refund or a credit is due. Therefore, that contributed significantly to the amount of abatement overlay payments and credits that were required. In any event, coming into the year, we knew it was going to be a tough year, but we knew we also had significant money in the overlay account, and we had a $1.5 million reserve. So, what we're asking now is that the reserve be transferred into the use of abatements. There will be still $400,000 and some dollars left over, but that will just go towards future abatements, future abatement requests, and we will analyze the situation and come to you with the amount of the overlay that we think is required this coming fall. Second, Madam President, I wanted to point out that we have on our desks, I think it's R. 44, R. 2249, which is a resolution that would transfer from contingency $21,000 to the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. I have visited this, and this amount will give them everything they need to complete the homeless shelter on Spring Street. They have done an incredible job on this homeless shelter. They started with a school that had not been used for 50 years, a good building, but one that had not been upgraded or occupied for a long time. They started with an $8.5 million budget, but that needed to go up as a result of cost increases COVID-related. Senator Shaheen was able to obtain $900,000 to, as what they now call a directed congressional spending, to make up most of the gap between the original budget and the increase to $9.5 million. And the project, and Michael Renkey, the Executive Director of the Soup Kitchen and Shelter, is very willing to give tours if you'd like to see it. Alderwoman Kelly was there earlier this week, or late last week when we did the tour. But the project will be a huge upgrade in terms of the homeless capacity, homeless facilities here in the city. Right now, they have two homeless shelters, the Soup Kitchen and Shelter does, Ash Street and Kinsley Street, which total about capacity of around 45. This has a capacity of over 90. In addition, there are dorms for both male and females. There are for single people. There are flexible kind of rooms for families that can be altered in terms of the size, depending on the size of the family. And there, on the top or fourth floor, there will be more longer-term, small kind of studio units where people can stay. And there are also a couple of classrooms where people can be educated and trained in terms of trying to get them back on their feet. So, we're seeing nearly a doubling of the capacity for, and the quality of the facility is far, far greater than what exists now. Ash Street is in very, very difficult shape. So, again, the capacity will be doubled, and if we give this $21,000 from contingency, we would complete the amount that they need. They would reach their $9.5 million. They're just a little bit short, and they would be able to then use our funds to complete the project. I guess I would add that when they did their, they renovated the facility on Quincy Street. The Board of Aldermen, the city voted to give them their last $100,000. That was a smaller budget. It was $3, $4 million, I believe, something like that. That was a few years back. But to me, this is a very worthwhile expenditure and just will put the icing on the cake, so to speak, or the cherry on top of the great project that they have run over the last few years and the incredible job they've done in coming up with all this money. And that is on your desk, so I hope you will suspend that for at least a first reading. And I don't know if it's your pleasure to try to refer it to committee or try to do second reading, but I would appreciate at least getting the first reading so that we can move towards passage of that resolution. And that is all I have, Madam President.
Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Lopez?
I just add to the comments made about the shelter capacity being increased. One of the major deficits the city has is there's, functionally speaking, only five family spaces, emergency shelter spaces, and those rooms are not sized for large families. They used to be, you know, for one or two female occupants. And so, I've seen over the years, families have to make some very, very difficult decisions over who gets to stay in the shelter and who can't, and that splits families, which is very unfortunate. When they talk about the adaptability of family space, it's a force multiplier. It's a lot more capacity because they're able to make a space for the size of the family presenting itself, and they don't have to necessarily block out a room that could have held four people because a family, like a single child family, came in two days before, and now they're not going to kick out a small family for a big family. Being able to adapt to that is a huge city need. We have a lot of really effective family transitional housing programs, like the Front Door Agency or Anne Marie's Marie House or Margaret's Place. But in order to get into those places, you often need a landing pad after eviction or whatever crisis makes you homeless that families struggle to find access to here in Nashua. And I think that's one of the most difficult things that I've, in a litany of difficult things, that I've seen homeless people experience, is that there is not enough family shelter space. This facility will go a long way towards amending that.
Any other remarks to respond to, Mayor? Okay. Recognition period. None. Reading minutes of previous meetings? None. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons. Communication from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public. There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared. Communication from Alderman John Caffey regarding his resignation letter to the citizens of Ward Seven. There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. First, I have Captain Gethart, or Sergeant Roy. There are both.
I'm Captain Clark Gethart with the National Police Department, joined today by Sergeant Andy Roy. We are here to speak to all of you with hopes of gathering your support for something that we've been working on for about the last six to seven months. And basically, we're looking to rename the small traffic circle at the intersection of Main Street, South Main Street, and the DW Highway after one of our fallen officers, Officer Edward Graziano. I'd like to start by thanking Alderman Wiltshire, Como, Caffey, Goveya, and Dowd for their support and guidance as we made our way through this project. So, without your support, we wouldn't be able to get this thing off the ground, so thank you for that. I have a brief history of Officer Graziano. I'd like to read for you that I've read multiple times at his anniversary date. Officer Rocky Graziano was born on May 19, 1938, in Somerville, Massachusetts, the son of Anthony and Irene Graziano. He attended the school in Arlington, Massachusetts, and graduated from Arlington High School in 1956. He continued his education in St. Anselm's College, graduating with high honors in criminology. Prior to joining NPD, he was a member of the Massachusetts National Guard and the Middlesex County Police Department. He also served with the Durham Police Department, where he was actually the acting chief for about nine months. He married his wife Sylvia Graziano and had three children, Mark, Brian, and Kerry. He was appointed a special officer in Nashua on June 7, 1961, and became a patrolman on June 12, 1963. He took up a residence with his family at 17.5 Brook Street, right here in Nashua. He became a motorcycle officer and investigated numerous motor vehicle collisions along his route, which included the FE Everett Turnpike bypass. On August 14, 1964, during the early evening hours while conducting motorcycle patrol on the old Route Three south of Riviera College in Hayward's Ice Cream, Officer Graziano was involved in a motor vehicle collision as he was conducting a traffic stop. He was transported to the Nashville Memorial Hospital, where he succumbed to his injuries sustained during the collision. Officer Graziano was 26 years old at the time, and his oldest child, Mark, was just five years old. Nashville Police Chief Paul Tracy at the time was quoted saying, quote, "He was a fine policeman, loyal, conscientious, and devoted to duty." The National Police Department has suffered a tremendous loss." That was the history that I had on him. We have a bunch more on this guy. He was a really interesting guy. But to honor him, Mark Graziano, his oldest son, who we still have a lot of contact with to this day, approached Sergeant Roy and I about seven or eight months ago with an idea that was just too good to ignore, and that idea was to try to name that circle after his father. So, with your support, we would like to do that. We would like to officially name it the Officer Edward Rocky Graziano Memorial Circle. We'd like to put up one traffic sign at that intersection, and we also like to erect a three- or four-foot granite post with a small marker made out of brass, just telling a little bit about Officer Graziano and his story so people could see it as they're walking by the area. We're looking to do that on the city of Nashville property that's right north of Hayward's Ice Cream, and we're looking to do that on August 14 of this year, which would mark the 58th anniversary of his death. And that is all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have no one else in the chamber unless Sergeant Roy, did you want to speak, or you're all set?
I appreciate the opportunity to come here today.
You have to come to the microphone.
I apologize. Sergeant Andrew at the Nashville Police Department. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with you guys today. We've gained the support of Riviera College, along with Hayward's Ice Cream. They're aware of Officer Graziano's sacrifice while enforcing motor vehicle law here in the city of Nashua. His family's been great, reaching out to us, Mark, and his support. We've also intend on erecting the monument through Gate City Monument on West Hall Street, utilizing local companies. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with you guys today and hopefully gain your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the chamber unless there's anyone that hasn't. Next, we have Fred Tebow.
Yes, Madam President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to comment on R. 22043, School Principal's Contract, with an average annual salary going from $93,000 to $107,000 over four years, or an average annual compensation package going from $137,000 to $160,000 over four years, that represents a 50% overhead. Way too high. The spending on this contract is way too high. Enough of the spending. Mayor Donches, Attorney Bolton, and CFO Griffin will, within a week, be served with a writ of mandamus complained filed by me in Superior Court for intentionally misrepresenting Nashville's spending cap and thereby knowingly violating both state and local charter law and deceiving Nashville's taxpayers in representing an annual budget to be $113 million below the cap, when in fact, it is actually $8.5 million above the cap. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else on Zoom that has their hand raised, so we're going to move on. Communications requiring final approval. Communication from President Lori Wiltshire regarding the resignation of Ward Seven Alderman John Caffey. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to accept Alderman's John Caffey's letter of resignation and seek letters of interest to fulfill the remainder of Alderman Caffey's term by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for landscaping the Library Plaza grounds. Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to place on file and award the two-year contract for professional landscaping for the maintenance of the Library Plaza grounds to greener tomorrow in the amount of not to exceed $13,000. Funding will be through Department 179 Library Fund, 54280, Building Grounds Maintenance General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you. President Wiltshire might be cart before the horse, but I know we discussed the ARPA funds and allowing the plaza to potentially go forward with the approval of this board. Would that change this contract, knowing it might go under construction?
I don't have that answer. Mayor, do you know that answer?
Not for sure. I mean, I don't think so. But, because they're talking, I don't think so. But the ARPA funds that could be allocated to this project would need to be supplemented by federal money. So, I don't think that that would be off the ground or certainly completed within two years. But, I mean, it's something we could ask the library.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for Wildlife Management Contract. Alderman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place on file and approve the three-year cooperative service agreement between the city of Nashua and the USDA Wildlife Management Services for a combined three-year total not to exceed $317,428.91. Funding for this agreement is through the Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification 53 Professional Technical Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
That's fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the award for a contract value in excess of $1 million for the 2022 CIPP lining program. Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I would move to place on file and approve the award of construction contract for the 2022 CIPP lining program to Kenyon Pipeline Inspection LLC of Queensberry, New York, in the amount of $1,412,170. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Wastewater Activity Sewer Rehab.
Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for copier leases and maintenances. Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place on file and approve the request for the Conway 60-month lease renewal slash replacement for copier equipment leases and maintenance renew in various city departments in an amount not to exceed $29,250. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, 54421, Copier Maintenance slash General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for risk management software upgrade. Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to place on file and approve a three-year contract from 9/1/22 to 8/31/25 to upgrade the city's Risk Management Software Master Services Agreement with Computer Sciences Corporation Risk Master 7.1 client hosted in the amount not to exceed $150,976, which is $47,516 per year for three years, with a one-time setup fee of $8,428 for Amazon Web Services and SciSense Reporting. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, 71228 Computer Software, and 54407 Software Maintenance slash General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas. And that motion carries. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for the annual maintenance for the PEG Channel playback server. Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for the annual maintenance for the PEG channel playback server.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes, I move to place on file and approve a multi-year contract for the maintenance and support of the City of Nashua's Hypercaster Playback Server to Telview Care in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Funding will be through Department one-two-two Information Technology Fund, five-four-four-eight-seven Equipment Repairs and Maintenance slash PEG Access Channels Special Fu-- sorry, Special Revenue Fund, sorry, Special Revenue Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the contract award in excess of one million dollars for the city's excess loss insurance coverage.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to place on file and approve the request for a contract with QBE Insurance Corporation for the city's excess loss policy, otherwise known as stop-loss, in an amount not to exceed one million nine hundred and five thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. Funding will be through Department one thirteen Benefits Fund, five-ninety-one-sixty-five Stop-Loss Coverage slash Benefits Internal Services Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for the financial audit services.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move to place on file and approve the extension of the Assistant Contract Agreement for Services to Audit the City's General Purpose Financial Statements, Federal Single Audit, and Schedules for Fiscal Year 2022 and 2023 in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred per year for two years, two years, for a total of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Funding will be through the Department one-twenty-six Financial Services Fund five-three-one-one-four Accountant and Audit and Services General Fund, a hundred and ninety-three thousand Solid Waste Fund, to twenty-nine thousand Wastewater Fund, forty-three thousand.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day-reappointed Sarah Caesar of Three Pine Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April first, 2025, and respectively request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the nomination referred to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the May sixteenth and May nineteenth, 2022 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R. twenty-two zero four zero relative to the transfer of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Department one sixty-two Street Lighting Account five-four-one-hundred Electricity to Department one-five-nine Hydrants Fire Protection Account five-four-eight-three-five hydrant fees.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. twenty-two forty, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie?
So this came before the Budget Review Committee, and it was unanimously voted to recommend final passage to you. This is a result of a shortfall in the amount budgeted for hydrant service. The PUC granted Penachuck a rate increase, so the cost of the hydrant fire protection increased. And so we had a shortfall in the budget. However, we had savings in the street lighting account because of the changeover to LED lighting bulbs. And so we're able to take the savings we received from the LED lighting transfer to pay for the hydrant service.
Any questions, discussion on this motion? Motion is for final passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-two forty is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. twenty-two zero four one relative to the supplemental appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-two Assigned Fund Balance into Fund Seventy-Twenty-Five City Retirement Trust Fund.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, President Wiltshire. I'd like to move for final passage of R. twenty-two oh forty-one by roll call pursuant to Charter Section forty-nine.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries, and Resolution twenty-two forty-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. twenty-two zero four three, approving the cost of items, cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Association of School Principals from July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2026.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-two oh forty-three, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, we had one of the principals, senior principals, the Vice President of the Union, come speak to us. And it was pointed out that the contract is trying to make things more palatable for people wanting to accept the job as a principal, because the highest teacher pay is almost close to the vice principal's salary currently, and the new collective bargaining agreement will make that more sound, and this did pass budget.
Questions, discussion? Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was at that meeting, and I heard Keith Richard go over it, and honestly, I find the comments earlier from the public laughable, that we are not spending our money right. I mean, why would we not spend money on the people that help teach our children, the principals, are the guiding light at each of these schools? And why would we not want a progression where teachers stay in Nashua and become principals or assistant principals? What's the point of having them go to other places? We want them to stay here. And I just don't understand why people think that we're paying too much for some of the services that we're paying for, because we're not. Look at other cities our size. If anything, we're losing teachers, and we're losing principals to other surrounding cities where they're paying more. So we have to stay competitive if we want a good city. We have to stay competitive if we want good schools. It's just bottom line. So I just wanted to say that.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes, sorry, I think it's been hard to hear me. I wanted to, you know, echo the comments that have been made, that the principal who came and spoke with us was talking about how you would like very much to retain teachers who have been there and have them become principals, but because of the way the salaries were set up, it just wasn't incentivized to make that jump. So I think this is a really critical step for us to, A, stay competitive, and B, keep our talent here in the city, investing in our children. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-two forty-three is declared duly adopted.
Second reading for R. twenty-two dash zero four four relative to the supplemental appropriation of one million five hundred thousand of FY 2022 Assigned Fund Balance into Department one-twenty-six Financial Services Account six-eight-five-hundred Abigness.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, President Wiltshire. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-two oh forty-four by roll call pursuant to Charter Section forty-nine.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes. Motion carries, and Resolution twenty-two forty-four is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O. twenty-two zero one-two, authorizing a stop sign on Garden Street and establishing a portion of Garden Street as a one-way street in an easterly direction.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. twenty-two oh twelve, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Como?
Thank you. So we did get a pretty good presentation in infrastructure about some of the changes that are going to be going on around the new transit center and the garage on Elm Street. And this would clean up some of the traffic patterns and eliminate some of the head-to-head traffic between cars leaving the garage and the buses coming out of the transit center. So I think this is a pretty easy solution to some of the congestion in that area.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
That's fourteen yeas.
That motion carries. Ordnance twenty-two twelve is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O. twenty-two zero one-four, no parking on the east side of the section of East Unstable Road.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. twenty-two oh one-four, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. The reason for this ordinance, as activity and traffic has increased on East Unstable Road, most notably around Robey Park, specifically in the wintertime with sledding, and now with disc golf, which we anticipate will add a good amount of traffic to the area. Also, there are parking challenges up in that section of town as well. This ordinance is going to allow East Unstable Road to remain as open as possible. It is a small, narrow country road, if you will. But as traffic has increased, I find it necessary in order to keep that roadway safe and open for not only residents, but folks that visit the park. You know, that's very much appreciated, so I'd appreciate this report. Thank you.
Discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2214 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for legislation that came in after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of R. 22-048. Naming the traffic circle located at the intersection of Main Street and South Main Street in honor of Officer Edward C. Graziano.
Other additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tebow, and Alderman Timmons.
Madam President?
Oh, and Alderman Sullivan. Okay. All right, given its first... Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for second reading of R. 22048. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd?
The reason for suspending this and bringing it forward is the anniversary of Officer Graziano's death is August 14th. And we'd like to get this fully passed this evening so that the Police Department can get everything prepared for that ceremony. I knew Officer Graziano very well and was actually expecting to see him the night that he was killed, and it was quite a shock. And I think this is a fitting honor. He was an outstanding individual, an outstanding police officer, and it was a very tragic death. So with that, I would like to suspend the rules for second reading.
Okay, discussion on the motion for a second reading. Oh, I have to make... I have to take a roll call on that.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, and I'd now make a motion for final passage of R. 22048, and ask everyone to support it, please.
Any discussion? Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm not generally in favor of naming things for people in general. But, you know, looking at reading Officer Graziano's story and realizing that, you know, my grandfather was a patrolman in Nashua in the late 1950s. He was a motorcycle cop, very bad accident at the end of 1958, 50-something. And he was in a coma and could have easily passed away like Officer Graziano. And I look at this, and it ended his patrolman's life. He had to become an office patrol or an officer, a desk officer, I guess. And he was, you know, head of the police relief organization for a while. So I'm sure he knew Officer Graziano, and this could have very well happened to my family. He was that close. So I really appreciate someone bringing this forward, and I full, 100% am in favor of it, so.
Alderman Clemmons?
I don't want to spar with anyone, but I... The only comment that I will make is that I think that it is important to name things after people because that's how you remember them, and that's how their name carries forward. So with that said, I am very happy to do this.
Anyone else? Just from what Sergeant Roy and Captain Getheart read about his accomplishments for such a young officer is really outstanding, so. No other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2248 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of R. 22-049. Relative to the transfer of 21,000 from Department 194, contingency account 70100, general contingency to Department 109, civic and community activities, accounting classification 56, outside agencies for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashville Soup Kitchen and Shelter Incorporated.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Alderman Lopez, do you have a motion? Oh, and Alderman Sullivan. Sorry, Alderman Sullivan.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for... Can I say recommend? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading, R. 22049.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez?
I think, per the comments that I was saying earlier, it occurred to me through the meeting that when we can't house families in an emergency situation through our nonprofit partners, city welfare steps then. So this is a small amount that we'll probably make back within that year alone because of the amount of work that Nashville Soup Kitchen does that otherwise the city would have to do and would have to address in a lot of different ways.
So the motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
And that motion carries. Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to recommend final passage of R. 22049.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. One, I believe this is a great thing that we're doing for the Soup Kitchen. However, I'll have to abstain from my vote after consultation with Corporation Counsel. My company has recently started offering counseling service at the Nashville Soup Kitchen Shelter, and I wouldn't want any misconception of my vote to be placed in the public's good graces.
Thank you, Alderman Moran. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to take a little liberty here. You know, I see this was part of the school system to St. Patrick's Church. And those of you who know Irish history like I do know that the patron saint of Ireland is St. Patrick. And those that also know Irish history know that they're the Irish suffer the famine, but yet they were exporting food. So I don't know how that happened, but I'll let the English answer that one. But anyways, many of the homeless, many people in Ireland were homeless. They didn't have shelter. They were kicked out of their homes. And I find this a fitting cause for this particular building to be used for this particular purpose. And just a request, I would like to see it somehow, some way, if the Nashville Soup Kitchen can still keep the connection to St. Patrick going on this one because, like I say, the Irish do suffer many of the things that our homeless people do suffer, and so it would be appropriate. But thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Lopez, and then Alderwoman Kelly?
I will defer to Alderman Kelly because I think she might say something similar.
Alderwoman Kelly? I don't know if that's the case. I actually wasn't aware that we were taking this under suspension this evening, and I just wanted to ask through Corporation Counsel if I should abstain. I'm on the board.
Be a good idea.
It'd be a good idea. Can I still talk about it?
Be a bad idea.
Okay, then I will say nothing, but it's a... Yes. I will be...
I don't think it's in much danger here, so.
I know, I know. I want to talk about it. I just wanted to be appropriate here. So Alderman Lopez? Can be my...
Alderman Lopez?
So I would just want to clarify that St. Patrick's Parish is very excited about this project. They consider it helpful to their spiritual and religious mission particularly because, you know, every parish needs a calling. Every Christian needs a way to express faith through works. So they're very supportive of the Soup Kitchen, and I think the parish considers this to be a move that will help the people who need help, act out the mission and the purpose that they have here in Nashua, and bring their parish together in a way that it hasn't been able to do since the school was opened. So I think Alderman O'Brien's wish is definitely going to be fulfilled. I think St. Patrick's is going to be a major partner in this.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Abstain.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Abstain.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
That's twelve yeas.
And that motion... Thank you, thank you. That motion carries. Resolution 2249 is declared duly adopted. New business ordinances?
None.
Period for public comment. There is no one signed up. And I don't see anyone online with their hand up. Okay. We're going to move on. Remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start over here tonight. Alderwoman Timmons? Remarks? Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, I don't have much to say tonight for a change, but I just wanted to give props to Alderman Lopez. Last week, last weekend, weekend before last, he had the Tree Street Block Party, and I think he did a great job organizing that. Some of us were there, and it was a lot of fun, and it was good to see the community out and about and listening to some great music and enjoying the beautiful day out. It was a little hot, but he did a great job. So thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, very quickly, I don't know how many people saw the article in the Union Leader, half-page on... I got a call from the Union Leader. There are a number of other cities looking to build schools, and they were... I'm not going to use the word, I guess, amazed, but they were very curious as to how we were being so frugal in building our schools. The school, the new McCarthy Middle School, we have pegged at the moment at 77 million, and we're trying to hold of that. We'll get more on that later. But a similar school being built in Concord has come in at 176 million. I know it's in a political area in Concord, but still, that price jumped. So they were very interested in how we're able to do the middle school project so efficiently, effectively, and still maintain quality. So it's a good article if you haven't read it. And then, of course, everybody followed up on that. We had inquiries from Concord, obviously. And then we also had interest from WMUR and Harvey Construction. And Sean Smith were on WMUR on the same subject. And they all came down, took pictures of the school. The picture in the Union Leader was of the Penetech Middle School, even though they said it was McCarthy Middle School. Now, if they saw the McCarthy Middle School project, they'd know it was much bigger. But anyway, that's going well. Also, the Board of Education has transferred a number of things to the Joint Special. We have three schools in Nashua that don't have the security vestibules. And we have federal funding and some state funding, I guess, to do that. And that's been transferred to the Joint Special School Building Committee by the Board of Education, and we'll be addressing that at the next meeting. Also, last night, they transferred the projects for Main Dunstable and Birch Hill to the Joint Special because that has federal funding. Those are open concept schools, and as far as, like COVID or even common colds or anything else, it's extremely bad. So the federal government is paying a substantial amount of those projects, and you'll hear more about that going forward. But the middle school project's going very well. We're just finishing up fairgrounds, and that is on schedule and ahead of budget. And that money will be transferred. And then we're a little early on Penetech, but we are substantially under budget at the moment, and that money would be transferred. So the only monies we may need going forward is to have contingency in case we run into, as you'll see in the article, unknown unknowns. I dealt a lot with that in my profession as a professional logistician at BAE. When you're building systems that actually cost more than our entire city budget, you have to be careful and make sure that you support the unknown unknowns. So anyway, just wanted to give you an update, and things are going well.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank everyone for their support of R. 22048. I'm thrilled that we're going to be naming the circle after Officer Graziano. And I'd just like to thank Sergeant Roy and Captain Getheart for coming in and speaking on that and kind of spearheading the project from the get-go. So I'm just glad that that's going to go through, and thank everyone for their support.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the two officers who came in and shared the story. I'm not on that committee, so it was nice to hear what's been going on and for my Aldermanic colleagues who helped pull that through. I also wanted to thank Alderman Lopez and everyone who put together the Tree Street Block Party. It was a lot of... It was well done. There was great music. There was, you know, the community was out. It was really a nice event. And he has done a great job, year after year, pulling that together. So it was hot. It's always hot. And then I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting the Soup Kitchen and Shelter. It's really been an incredible project that's going to be an asset to the city. So I invite you all to come on a tour like Mayor Don just did.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a brief moment to give my thanks to former Alderman Cathy. It was a pleasure serving with him. We didn't always see eye to eye on everything, but I think we worked well together. I think he served Ward Seven very well, and I wish him well.
Anyone else over here? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody who came to the Tree Street Block Party, residents particularly. I wanted to apologize to the residents who were... Because we had to move everything over a day, some of them had to make some careful arrangements to get out of their driveways, move the festival. We had a really good team, though, and I don't want it to look like I organized it personally or by myself. Involved Impact as an organization was very helpful. The city departments were really, really accommodating, especially since the weather report looked like it was going to be a torrential thunderstorm-filled day. So we moved it one day over, and then nothing happened. So we still had a great day on Sunday. New Fellowship Baptist Church was very supportive and even moved their services. International Soccer Club, First Gen American. We had a lot of really good partners, and it's one of the things that I'm most proud of about Ward Four and specifically those neighborhoods is that block party is really an opportunity to showcase how many great partners we have in those neighborhoods that are working to make Nashville lives better. So I'm very proud of it, and I'm very much appreciative of all people who came, our sponsors, and everyone who made it such a great success. And I also want to share that at the end of this month, because I don't believe we have an Alderman meeting before that, on July 29th, there is Dancing in the Park, Latin Festival themed. So obviously, you know they'll be dancing. And then on that Sunday, First Gen American and Latino In Vivo are doing a Latin Festival in French Renaissance Park. So it's going to be an exciting weekend and a great opportunity to experience some culture.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank Alderman Lopez and his organization for putting on the Tree Street Block Party. I went. Many of us here went. It was fantastic. Lisa, my life partner, I got to also sponsor on behalf of our company. You know, anytime I say my company has sponsored something, it's actually her who does all the work. And we were out there. We met a lot of great people, connected them to counseling services, and it was a lot of fun. And the new Fellowship Baptist Church Choir just nailed it. Amazing. Also, since there hasn't been a full Alderman meeting since the Fourth of July, but the Fourth of July at Silver Knights was my first Silver Knights game. It was great. My daughter Violet caught a fly ball one-handed while she was eating popcorn. She didn't know what to do with it. Yes, the popcorn. And then on the NAACP, we had Silver Knights, second Silver Knights game in the course of a week, was also fantastic. Alderman Timmons was there, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly. And just thanked the NAACP for inviting or getting me to get there, right? It was wonderful, and, you know, all those three events, and I'd be remiss if I didn't share this with the mayor, but my oldest daughter, Summer, says he's everywhere. He's had all these events. He goes to everything. And she says, is he a great mayor or the greatest mayor? And I just say, greatest mayor so far. But thank you for your time.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to announce that Ward Three is having a community meeting tomorrow, 7:00 PM, at the Hunt Memorial Building. Any of the Aldermen or Aldermen at large are welcome to come, as well as anyone else. The mayor will be there. Nashville PD representatives will be there. We'll be discussing crime watch meetings, some of the break-ins that have been happening within the ward. Public Works will also be there to discuss paving, reporting of different issues that are happening and so on. This is going to be the first, I think, of three, a series of three, meetings that I will be holding. The next two, I'm hoping in September and November, that will have some other city departments there, including Doria Brown from Energy, our energy efficiency person. I call her our Green Guru. And Pamela Davies, our grant writer. They've both agreed to come to the September one. I want to apologize to Alderman Lopez for not making the Tree Street...
Were you in the hospital?
Yes, I was. I spent the Fourth of July weekend in the hospital, and I want to talk about that, not my being there, but to talk about how short-staffed our hospitals are. I spent three days in the ER, three nights in the ER, because they did not have beds that were manned. They don't have staff, and they don't have that. The ER department was incredible. They had patients in the hallways. They have EMT people that now work, the AMR, EMT, and paramedics work side by side there, taking blood pressures and, you know, bringing some meds. They could bring in some they couldn't do. So they don't have enough staffing. Anybody who's interested in the field, I know St. Joe's has a program that they're working with. They were incredible people. I felt blessed to be there, felt guilty to be there because they had so much staff. But I got great care while being there. But those ER beds are so tiny, even my legs were hanging over the edge of them. So the other thing is, this is the political season. We're seeing more and more signs going up. I just want to remind any of those that are running to become familiar with the proper campaigning, where to put their signs, and so on. proper campaigning, where to put their signs and so on. I, I spoke to Deputy Clerk Tara King a few days ago about a complaint that I got that there were some people that were outside of grocery stores and so on that were registering voters. They cannot register a voter. The only people that can register a voter is a clerk's office. I got a call from the AG's office relative to that, who have spoken to the person, and wasn't exactly cooperative. So just to keep an eye open, please report anything you see like that to the, the clerk's office as well as the AG's office. They're keeping an eye open for it. It's very concerning that people are saying they're registering voters. That will mean that these voters will feel that they've been registered, they will come to the polls, not have the appropriate ID, and they will not have been registered. This is such a disservice to our citizens that we do need to all keep an eye open for it. And I, I thank Deputy Clerk King for helping guide this and bring this, this forward to the AG's office. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Good. Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, President Wiltshire. Just a few things. First of all, thanks to the board for unanimously passing O twenty-two, one, four. That's going to be a big help on East Dunstable Road. Second, also in Ward Nine, my wife texted me tonight, as I am out on the road, as you can see, to let me know that the pickleball courts on Shady Lane are now fully painted, and the nets went up. Special thanks to the Department of Public Works for getting that done. They said August first, so they underpromised and overdelivered, so thanks to them for getting that done. And finally, good luck and Godspeed to former Alderman John Kathy. Thanks.
Alderman O'Brien? No? I too would like to wish Alderman Kathy all the best. He did serve his constituents well for the brief time he was with us, and was easy to work with, and I, I just wish him the best. Okay, I think that's committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, July thirteenth, here in the Aldermanic Chamber at seven PM, will be a meeting of the Infrastructure Committee, and we're going to have a single focus discussion on the Pearl Street project. So if you want any other Alderman, not a member of the Infrastructure Committee, you want additional information about the project, you're welcome to come. To members of the Infrastructure Committee, other than budget, it's one of the busiest committees, and sometimes we have to have two additional meetings per month because just the things that just come flying up. Particularly if one of those things is coming up like what's happening tomorrow night with a presentation, that takes a lot of time. And so thus, I blocked approximately an hour and a half for the presentation and discussion. So I anticipate tomorrow night will be a long meeting. But we're going to have to come up with a decision and give Director Cummings some direction on where we're going to go with the project. So I do thank members of the Infrastructure Committee for understanding that and maybe accepting the extra workload of possibly two meetings when required per month. I will try to keep it to one month, but a situation that has occurred with this project here is one of the things that needs attention. So thank you, Madam President.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Dow?
Yes, Alderman O'Brien forgot that he has a meeting on the twenty-first of the, the infrastructure and the public works on the new Public Works building, and at seven o'clock, I'll be kicking him out for the Joint Special School Building Committee.
Yes. Well, thank you. I forgot. There's no meeting prior to that. Thank you, Alderman Dow, for the color.
So that's at the Nashville High North. His meeting's at six, mine's at seven.
That's it. Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen in attendance.
And we are adjourned at eight forty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.